The meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. I hope no one got flooded away with all our snow melt and two good days of rain.
More coming.
Yep, more coming.
I have a lake.
You have a, I have a lake too. I think, literally, I think I got a dozen phone calls about people calling about water in their ditches. That's where the water's supposed to be?
It is raining.
In the ditches?
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, it's, a lot of yards are flooded out, definitely understand that. And, uh, alright, uh, let's see, roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Sandy Kufa.
Here.
Okay, we're all here, that's a good thing. Uh, I'd like to amend the, um, agenda at this time. Um, we're gonna have a presentation by our Clay Township Police on, uh, disrupting, uh, hostile extremists. And, uh, we'll get more into that in a little bit, but I'd actually like to put that under bills payable.
Support.
That was a motion, supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. Alright, next on the agenda is our bills payable, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fourteen cents.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufa?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Motion carries. And next, we have our presentation by Officer Stockwell Ferrardo on disrupt, disrupting extremists, and let me get the lights over there. Um, Madison, if you wanna get the, um, tune in on the presentation, that'd be awesome. Go ahead, introduce yourself, gentlemen, and take it away.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I talk?
To be mic'd though, you gotta go over there and hit the X on that.
What the heck did you do to me?
Oh, it's antivirus stuff.
Okay. Alright, as you know, my name's Officer Ferrardo, Clay Township Police Department. I've been involved in law enforcement now going on twenty years. In this time, we've been, you guys have sent us to additional training to, just more recently to New Mexico, myself and Sergeant Stockwell, along with other members of Sacred County Cat Team, went down there for a preventative response to suicide threats, and this kinda ties into that. Uh, Sergeant Stockwell and I are both members of the Sacred County Cat Team, Critical Asset Assessment Team, which goes around and basically, in short terms, make, helps make soft targets hard targets. So, go ahead, do your little spiel over.
Sergeant Stockwell, I've been here for ten years, obviously I've been in law enforcement for a little bit longer than that. Um, like Officer Ferrardo said, we did join this, uh, Cat Team with Sacred County Emergency Management. Uh, there are some really good programs that they have out there, and this, uh, Cat Program is something that we'd like to present to the board, uh, with this presentation, and allow the board to actually go out in the community and talk about the, the program that, that, that Sacred County has put together for their emergency management team and what we could do for, for those businesses and, and schools and everything in the community, so.
On that note, we'll start, you don't need me to stand right by, do you?
They can't hear you.
Yeah, near the mic.
Dang it. I tend to walk around a lot when I do these.
It's okay.
Alright, basically what this is, is disrupting extremists, it's a community hostile train, event training and awareness.
Doesn't see your mouse.
Nope, what the heck?
He's in there.
There it goes, okay. The members of this depart, of this team are Sacred County Sheriff's Department, Port Huron Fire Department, Port Huron Police Department, Port Huron Township Fire Department, Marine City Fire Department, Clay Township Police, Sacred County Emergency Management. The reason we do this as Critical Assessment Team is cultural preparedness. What we're looking to do is educate and inform our community on hostile events, and this is, this ranges from active shooters to anything that may deal with chemicals. I mean, our area here, Sacred County is a hotbed, we have forty-seven million pounds per day that's transported by truck and train through this area. We have multiple utility things in this area, utility failures, failures with DTE, we deal with climate change, severe weather as we're seeing right now, cyber attacks and public health issues. Disrupting the extremists is one of the biggest things of public outreach program, designed to generate public information and awareness. We're focusing on educating our community, our business partners. Yeah, it's known, it's known that extremists often utilize community-based businesses, both legally and illegally, for their own plans, for their own benefit. At times, these activities can be viewed as suspicious in nature, if evaluated properly can be useful information to assist law enforcement, and our efforts to confirm or refute possible hostile events. So basically, what we're trying to do is educate you folks, so if you see somebody in our community that's just looks off, they're acting shady, they're just not, not looking normal, something's making your, the hair in the back of your neck raise, you're gonna turn some information over to us, and at that point, we will investigate it further, and either confirm that it is a viable threat, or refute that there's absolutely nothing there, that it's just some people are just different. The purpose here is to, obviously augment local police and national resources. If you see something, say something, which is developed by Homeland Security and DHS. We wanna assist with asset protection. We'll develop possible investigable leads and protect our community and train and educate. The program strategy is the information, we need to develop and cultivate information. We need your eyes and ears, you guys see and deal with people every day on a different basis than what we do. So when you see this information, you see how people are acting, you get the information, you turn it over to us. At that point, we're able to investigate it further, we determine if there are early indicators, if this is leading to more of an event planning type situation, and we will communicate back and forth with you, back and forth with agencies above us, and then decide whether or not we have to, what kind of enforcement method we may need. Wrong button. The benefits, protects our community, it increases involvement between the community and the police, it implements more information at local level which ensures, ensures and elevates integrated and national terrorism strategies, increase information by everybody, the more information, obviously again, the more information we get from you, the better prepared we're gonna be to help protect you. It utilizes all the resources based off of tips and information of that nature. It brings your community policing back more, more fully around. We're here to help you, and we can't do that without you providing us information. Lessons learned from the past, we have multiple areas here. Oklahoma City bombing, this one ties directly to Michigan. Up in Decker, Michigan, Timothy McVeigh drove the U-Haul truck out to Oklahoma with the nitrate and full bomb. Then we have NBC anthrax, nine eleven terrorist attacks, Boston Marathon, Manhattan truck, the Buck Bike Path, and Charleston church shooting. These incidents are here, they're real. The thing that we need to get through to folks is it's not if it happens, it's when it happens. It doesn't matter where you're at, some of these are major cities, obviously, nine eleven, Oklahoma, Boston, but it happens in small towns like Charleston, the church shooting. Obviously, we just saw incidents like this in Florida. I mean, it's here, it's real, it's not going away. What are some of our threats? We don't deal too much with radiation or nuclear. Our main threats that we're gonna see in our areas, firearms. We live in an area where just about everybody in this community hunts, firearms are readily accessible and available to everybody. IEDs, homemade explosive devices, this is a new phase, it's, it's been around forever but it's starting to gain popularity. These are things that we're seeing on a more regular basis, we've got a couple stories we'll go into a little later, but these are the threats that are gonna cause problems in our area. Because you can impact, a threat can be here, but the impact can be devastating. The past US-related tactics since nineteen ninety, we had seventy shootings, fifty bombings, two arson's, six biological attacks, ten others, and there were over thirty-six hundred deaths, resulting in eleven thousand injuries. The cost of these injuries is unknown, that number keeps rising, due to medical treatment, psychological, anything and everything. We will never be able to put a number, a legitimate monetary value on these numbers. I put this question to most people, are we vulnerable here?
Oh, yeah.
Clay Township, just as much as any other part of the community or the county. Right in our area, we have, on Harson's Island, over on Twenty-Six Mile, we have two airstrips. We have, obviously, water up and down our entire area. In this area here, we're the largest point of carrier for hazardous and radioactive material crosses through Sacred County. The water plants provide most of Michigan. But what gets me and where we're vulnerable is these areas right here. Sixty public-private parochial schools within seven school districts in Sacred County, over eighty-eight places of worship. These are the soft targets we're talking about. These are the areas that people feel that they can go to where it's safe and nothing happens, but as we've seen, those incidents are acting up, they're getting more and more violent. Why? Because it's soft targets, we haven't taken the precautions to protect our people inside those areas. Closer to home, I always read this part because I think it speaks volumes. Something we all say, does not happen in small communities, although we found out today it does. This was Sheriff Joe Tackett out of Wilson County down in Texas. We've all said it, we've all done it, it doesn't happen here, it'll never happen here, we're a small area. That's wrong, that mindset has to change. It is here. I mean, we got ties to this here, marriage or jump and jam, domestic disturbance, female and females work inside there, unfortunately, was, her life was terminated, and the subject went home and killed himself. Shooting in Texas, similar incident, gentleman went in, started shooting, thankfully citizens took care of the threat. Santa Clara County, you're talking about medical marijuana, this one here was a home invasion that took place. Three or four gentlemen from Flint, guy had a dispensary in Flint, they followed him home, found out where he was growing the marijuana, they broke in his house at about five o'clock in the morning on a Sunday. They broke in, shot at the resident, the homeowner that had the dispensary, he shot back and killed two of them. It's here, these things happen, these people are not going away. They will follow you whether, you look from Flint up to, up in Santa Clara County, Greenleaf Township, a lot smaller than our area, but the threats are there and they're real. How do we do it, how do we take care of this? It's all about the resources. Terrorists have hostile events, it's planned activities, their timeline is totally different from our timeline. Our timelines are pretty fresh, pretty recent. If we plan an event, we typically plan it within a week to a month to two days, or to two weeks, two months, their events could last five, six, ten years. It doesn't have to happen overnight, they have all the time in the world. And at that point is what we need to do, is start watching these movements, what they're doing, where they're going, where they're interacting. They need resources, who are they talking to? Where are they getting the materials? What'd we learn in the past? They plan the attacks, they, they execute them, they do trial runs, look at nine eleven, we had one prior plane flying into the Twin Towers before nine eleven happened. They do the trial runs, they're not afraid to. I always screw up the pronunciation of this guy's, Najibullah Zazi. This gentleman is a unique, you know, this one was stopped, this was a terrorist threat that was stopped prior to it occurring based on the training and the education. This guy was a Middle Eastern man, probably, what was he, mid thirties? Twenties to thirties, went into like a Sally's beauty salon, like a Sally's hair care place that sells strictly to, like, hair products in bulk. Went in there and bought two shopping carts full of hair bleach. The female behind the counter was trained to be observant and watch for these people coming and buying chemicals and doing different things. Thought it was odd that this man was coming and buying multiple, just volume and bulk of hair bleach, and asked him, what are you doing, why are you buying so much? His response to her was, I have a lot of girlfriends. Which could be true, may not be. She took that, got the spidey sense going, red flags went up. She took that information, passed it along to the local authorities, and at that point, they decided to investigate it, that whole, we get back to the confirming or refuting. They confirmed that it was a viable threat, and they were able to stop it at the terrorist attack before it happened. Understanding signs of terrorism, surveillance, photos, videos, drawings, elicitation, they're gonna come to the sites, they're gonna obtain information from people. These are the guys that show up at churches that just kinda stay in the back, much like Steve, just kinda just hanging out where you don't really see them, and they don't really talk, they just look odd, you gotta figure out why they're there. So you go up to them, well, what are you doing here, can I help you guys, you're new to my area? And I make fun of him, he'll beat me up later, but it's alright. But that's, you make note of these people, because we know who belongs in our communities, we know what they look like, and you know when somebody's coming in and they're changing attitude, whether one day they're real happy and eccentric, and the next few times you see them, it's slowly digressing and they're starting to withdraw. Take note of that, don't be afraid to talk to them and find out what's going on. They may test the security measures, they're gonna have to acquire supplies, whether it be somebody that goes into lumberjack, and they go in and have chunks of pipe bomb, or pipe cut into little sections, I need twelve pieces cut into six inch lengths. It's not really common that you're using six inch lengths of PVC piping, and I need end caps on both of them. Those should be red flags that are coming, going off. So they're gonna, they're gonna be doing suspicious activity, trial runs, we've already discussed that. And then eventually, they're gonna start deploying and putting these resources into Sample community partners, these are the things that we have in our community. Gas stations, hardware stores, hotels, pharmacies, property managers, restaurants, storage, trucks, we have all these things. This is based off of Sacred County, but look at the majority out here, this is all right in our area. We don't have to go far to have these things here. So we have to educate and train our community to be aware and, and be watching what comes in and what comes out. How can you help? Trust your instincts. You know when something doesn't feel right, I can't teach you that. All I can tell you is, if somebody walks in and you got that feeling that it's just not right, listen to it, don't ignore it, take note of it, even if it's nothing more than taking a picture, taking a video. We're not getting any younger, me included. We don't remember things like we used to. Your description today, Cindy, will not be the same tomorrow or the next day of somebody. You, we can leave here, and you can look at Lance, and his description, whether it be the clothing, the hairstyle, or something, will change within two to three days from what you saw tonight if I were to ask you again. Take a picture of it, we all have modern technology on our phones, we all have this new age where videos, pictures, everything is right there immediate. Don't be afraid to take it. I don't care about this politically correct style where you might offend somebody because you take a picture. Do it anyways, trust your instincts. Okay, we've gotten way too politically correct on certain issues like that, where we make ourselves vulnerable. We have to be willing to just, if we realize something, act on it. I'm not telling you to go up and confront the person, but if you see something, make sure you notify somebody, or at least take notes, and get as much detail as possible, which falls back into the video and the pictures. The more detail you have on that, the easier it is for us to confirm and refute things. If you can't, write it, the more detail you can get on somebody, the better. Height, weight, age, facial, do they have hair, do they have a goatee, do they have a beard, do they wear glasses? Whatever information you think is pertinent, get it, even if you don't think it's pertinent, get it. Because it all might be, be pertinent down the line, we won't know until we start talking. It's all about the clues or indicators. We need as much as we possibly can to hit the big picture. That's one of his words he loves. This is one thing I wanna reiterate, that everybody feels, if I go up and I see somebody of Middle Eastern descent, am I profiling them? You're not profiling based on age, race, or religion, you're profiling based on a behavior, based on how they're acting, what they're doing, and that's not a crime, that's not illegal. You're profiling based on behavior, not action, not race, not religion, not anything like Once you notice things, you have to take action. You, in order for us to take action, you have to take action. If you don't get this information, if you just dismiss it, we might not get it again to follow up on. So we rely on you to obtain the information, pass it over to us in order for us to act. Alright, summary, real quick, threats of terrorism, it's a risk attack on the United States, the threat's still here as much as it was on nine eleven, we know that. The tactics can range from individual knife bearing or vehicle assault, we've seen all of these. Most commonly used tactic right now is the use of IEDs, or HMEs, homemade explosive devices. Majority of the terrorist attacks have been towards civilians in populated locations, we have those here, we have events where this could become an issue. We need to start taking the steps to make sure that our area and our community is secure and becomes a hard target, not a soft target. Know the indicators, and know the partnerships needed. The partnerships needed are all of us communicating, there's not one of you that can obtain just as much information as we do. We have to work together, you have to be willing to work with us, just like we have to be willing to work with everybody here. Unfortunately, you know, we take a pretty stronghold here in our community, we typically do this throughout the county, so we don't, we're not as able to get involved with how they do things, but here we are, you know all of us, you know each one of us sitting in here today, you guys have our numbers, you have our contacts, you know how to get ahold of us, don't hesitate, reach out, we're here.
This presentation that we put on isn't meant to scare the community in a whole, this is meant for educational purposes, and now that, you know, TV Land's out there listening, there are a couple things that we, we like to bring to the attention that people don't normally think of. And one of the scenarios that they don't put in this presentation, but the one that I like to, uh, go to and address every time that we do this presentation, as you can see, I don't talk a lot because he talks enough for a couple different people, um, is, there is a, a case that happened while we were in New Mexico, when you guys sent us down there to train at, at New Mexico Tech. The Albuquerque Police Department responded to a call for a possible IED explosive that was found in a young lady's bedroom. What they found out in this case was that there was a kid that played Xbox One, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that gaming system, that's something that I know about, and a lot of the younger kids play all the time. They actually can put a headset on and talk to anybody globally. This kid was a loner, he was a high school dropout, he was off to the side, he was very good at first-person shooter games, somebody over in the Middle East recognized the high scores of his gaming profile and started communicating with him. During that communication, he convinced this young gentleman that he needed to go ahead and teach everybody a lesson. So, over the next course of a little while, this person that he talked to over in the Middle East convinced him to make an explosive device and take it to his high school graduation. Over that internet, over that connection, they were able to come up with a pressure cooker device, a bomb. This kid had no other experience in explosive devices, he had no other experience other than what he's learning from this guy over the internet. He built the device to the point where he could've put a timer on it and made it go off at a specific time. The only reason why the device didn't go off is because he didn't follow the person's instructions to a T. The kid decided not to take it to this high school graduation, he didn't wanna do that, he just wanted to take out his ex-girlfriend. The ex-girlfriend that woke up and found it actually opened the device up before she realized what it was. There were so many variables that could've gone wrong, and had that person follow the instructions to a T, that could've been catastrophic. This is out there, so the reason why we wanna put this out there is if you do see red flags, if you're seeing stuff in your kids, in your grandkids, in nieces and nephews, if your friends' kids, don't be afraid to say something. Again, like Officer Ferrardo said, the time of, of, you know, oh, I can't say anything, I'm gonna offend somebody, we've all watched news on this Floris, the Floro shooting now. How many interviews have they gone through and the person said, yeah, we kinda figured this was gonna happen, yeah, we kinda thought this kid was gonna do that. We can't do that, we can't let it stand by, we have to take action, we have to go forward, we have to be productive. And the fact that the board's taking this step, and again, everybody in TV Land, um, Sacred County Emergency Management's Cat Team does go out and we do assessments of buildings and stuff like that, and, and Chief Coach has, has been great with allowing us to go out and assist everywhere in the county on this program, so it is something that we really believe in and, and we're gonna implement everywhere that we can.
Like we discussed earlier, kinda ties into this, the Alice training. We already have that lined up for, for the schools in the area, we are still pushing this out there, and again, is a free training to everybody, we encourage you to get this done, we, like I said, I'm one of the Alice trainers along with some of the other guys within the county, will come here, obviously you guys are lucky you have me here, I'm part of our team here, so you're stuck with me, I'm not going anywhere. For now. So.
I was just laughing.
You are, at least in my head. So, we have that training, we will make it available whenever it works for you folks. So, but I encourage you to definitely tap into that and get that out there, and, go ahead.
Who would, who, just to be clear, who would benefit from you coming in and do like the Alice or, or a different presentation?
There's two different programs.
Businesses, or?
The, the Alice training is set for, you know, your schools and stuff like that, that's what they're really pushing.
Schools, churches, businesses, any place, any place where you have a congregation, that's meeting.
This Critical Asset Assessment Team that we have, the Cat Team through Sacred County Emergency Management, that's, uh, we'll go out and do an assessment of like, a church, a small business, we'll go in and we'll actually say, okay, you know, here's where we think your weak spots are, here's where you can strengthen up, here's our suggestions that we do. It's not telling you, you need to do this, it's just going through and saying, hey, you know, maybe an ad of a security camera will prevent something from happening. And I can say that there are a couple, um...
Nope, all confidential.
Well, I know that, but a couple places have already come in and asked us to perform it, and it's, it's worked out great.
Right.
Yes, it's completely confidential. You will, we will have you sign paperwork, where basically if we were ever to use any of the information, we have to run it past you first. So anything we tell you stays between the people that it needs to.
Okay, and if someone would like this at their business or, or a church or something, how should they contact?
Contact Nikki Falk up at Sacred County Emergency Management.
Okay, can they call our dispatch and then?
Yes, or they can call our dispatch and we can get you in touch with them, and you have that number, eight-ten-seven-nine-four-nine-three-eight-one.
Right.
Alice, they call radio station, they set that up right through there.
Uh, let's see, what else do we have? Couple more things. Is there any other questions that anybody has at this time with it?
I, I, I'd like to mention, you know, we were talking about soft targets, and one thing that scares me to death, well, not to death, but scares me a lot, um, in our area, I don't mean to alarm people, but I'm always concerned of the fact, if someone wanted to sink a freighter, they would do it in our channel because it would shut down Great Lakes shipping, which would be a econ, big economic issue.
Right.
I mean, there's, there would be motivation to do that, and furthermore, if they did it in, say, like, the south channel, it would cause a hellacious flood, when you have a basically a freighter stopping the current from going through the water, it would back up and, uh, it, it would be a major issue for us.
I think we can maybe tie that in the summer, do a training exercise, we can maybe talk chief of the state one of those ways.
Yeah, right, but I mean, that's...
Just before job, because it won't interfere with anybody.
Right, but to me, that, that's a big soft target that, you know, locally here, that , uh, most communities really, they wouldn't have.
And that's it, exactly, and like I said, and just so you're aware, these things are free. Sacred County ourselves, we come out, we do these, provide these for nothing, we want this out there, we want everybody to know. Also, you guys are aware of it, the E-911, they have a facility-based E-911, which we encourage all of our businesses to get ahold of, the dispatch centers to contact them, because as a business, you can go in and you can actually input your building design, you can do your blueprints and your layout, you can get as detailed as you want, so if something happens at that site, it registers right to us and we can have it before we even get there as officers. So we encourage you to go online and get, it's a different one from the, from the personal side of it. Have the businesses get in touch, Sacred County will come right out and help you set that up, but the information that you can put in there is very valuable and beneficial to us as first responders going to that scene, whether it's police, fire, EMS, so anybody, if there's questions on that, please give us a call because we can fill you in a little bit more on that. Any other questions? Thank you, we appreciate you guys giving us a little bit of time here today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Good presentation.
Yeah, just shut the... Thanks a lot for, uh, coming.
No problem, thanks for having us.
Appreciate it, you guys.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yes.
Good job.
And like I say, if anybody needs, uh, some advice or, uh, get ahold of Sacred County Emergency or, or police. Uh, next on the agenda is consent agenda, entertain a motion?
No public comments.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, public comments. Do we have any public comments? No public comments, come on Lance, you wanna talk?
Yeah.
Okay, no public comments, I can see, so now we'll move along to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of February fifth, two thousand eighteen, and synopsis, check reports, January assessing, code enforcement, and water reports, notice of our public hearing, March fifth, two thousand eighteen, with regards to the Colony, um, Colony Drive water line, communication... Communication, there is an HSCM newsletter, which is Homeland Security Emergency Management, I believe. Letter of resignation from Police Department from Officer Hopkins. Sad to see him go. Police thank you card and request from the assessors for continuing education, eighty dollars, and request from Sherri Lawton for membership renewal for the assessor for a hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion on any of those items? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any motion carries? Next, we have our supervisors' report. Tell you what, I broke my regular glasses painting my office and I, I'm using my backup, so I'm going to do this without my glasses.
Oh, boy.
So, actually, I just came from the island. They had a town hall meeting. A lot of questions about medical marijuana and how, where the township stands and, and how it works. I just want to briefly, briefly.
Briefly.
Recap that, that to allow medical marijuana dispensaries or grow operations, a township has to, or a municipality has to opt in to allow it. This board is not opted in, and so how it stands is it can't come here to do it. There, there's five different levels. There's growing facilities, there's processing, there's transportation, there's inspection, and then there's dispensaries. We have not opted in. And my own personal opinion, you know, everyone says, well, it could be a economic windfall for us. It isn't. The cost of enforcement and everything outweighs, I believe, the amount of money you can collect. We can collect up to five thousand dollars per facility. That's it. And then the state actually captures three and a half percent of their gross. The locals does it, does not capture it. It goes to the state. And with the Headley Amendment, we, it's actually against the law for the township to charge more money than it does to enforce for any permit, like, like our billing department. We can't actually make a profit under our billing permits. It's just against the law. Headley, Headley Amendment, I think our billing department actually loses forty thousand dollars a year, just on inspections on all of our permits. It's against the law for us to make a profit, and the same thing would, would go towards medical marijuana offering permits, what we can charge for. So, there really isn't a, a big incentive locally to, to increase our tax dollars either. And made that clear to the people, and they had some, there was probably about a hundred people at this town hall meeting right before this meeting. And there were some concerns, but I, I believe we put it to rest that, you know, this township did not opt in on any, any way to allow these facilities to come here. All right, we have our annual road meeting, February 26th at one o'clock, if anybody wants to attend. Where it's about a two-hour meeting, and we'll go over road projects that we have in line of the township and the county. And then they'll actually go through and address how they get their funding from the gas tax and state funding too, how it goes to the road commission and trickles down to us. I wanted to mention again, we've been spending a lot of time on mediation with the MAF, the Michigan Association of Firefighters, and I think we have a mediation set for this coming Friday. We did have a couple of meetings for music in the park, and we're getting geared for this coming schedule, booking bands and sponsors, and balls rolling on that. And I've also been talking to our planner on a lot of various issues with zoning and that type of thing. Working on grants, the DNR Trust Fund Grant and other grant opportunities for exercise equipment in the park. I'm getting letters of commitments and support for our DNR Trust Fund Grant. I just got a huge letter of support from the St. Clair County Parks and Rec. They are committed of matching or splitting the local match, so basically that property, when the township, it goes through, the township will only be responsible for thirteen percent of the price of that property. And the St. Clair County Parks and Rec is going to also pay thirteen percent, and the DNR Trust Fund will be the seventy-four percent. And so that's, and, and they also committed to giving us some handicap kayak launches also already, so, for that project. We did have a meeting about our wastewater treatment plant and collection system. We do have some issues at our pump station. Is that number two pump station, Lance?
Yes.
It's called, yeah. It's over by Pearl Beach. The inside, it goes down underground and the cement wall's deteriorating and a lot of corrosion. It's from, basically from sewer gas. And we're getting estimates on what it's going to take to fix it in the best way. I'm in hopes that we can put in a liner and epoxy a new liner in. I believe that's what the recommendation is going to be. It's a lot cheaper than, you know, ripping it out and putting a whole new wall in. And we're in kind of negotiations on how it will, how it will be paid for, because actually, you know, it's, our, we'll just call it fluids. Our fluids are in it. But so is a hundred percent of IRA fluids in it because we transport to our wastewater treatment plant. So, it will be a shared cost between us and IRA on that repair too. So, and we're going to also put in some kind of ventilation, and so this problem doesn't happen again at any of ours. In other words, to vent a lot of the gases, so it doesn't. What happens is sewer, correct me if I'm wrong, Lance, the sewer gas, when it hits some water or air, it turns to sulfur, sulfur. Sulfuric acid, battery acid. And that's what deteriorates the cement walls and the metal there. So, hopefully that will be, be taken care of. Our, our new property that we purchased at 5244 Trumbull Road, the water department did tear down the garage, and we're getting ready to tear the house down when it dries up. It's pretty wet now. And so that's moving right along. I did see some press and some literature about how the governor's proposing a four and a half dollar per ton increase on our landfill fees, four and a half dollars per ton. Right now, we get charged from the state is like thirty-five, forty cents, and they, they want it up at four hundred and fifty, four dollars and fifty cents per household. Now, a normal household gets, has about one and a quarter tons per year. So, I don't know, it's about, if I didn't do the math, five, six dollars a household. And if that goes through, we may have to look at our, our budget for collecting garbage. I do have some pretty reliable contacts and last thing, they don't think it's going to go through, but we're going to have to sit and wait and watch for that. Hopefully, they'll make a decision before our, our budget process in July 1 goes through, so we can react. This last weekend, Winter Fest was next door at the park. It went fairly well. There was a good attendance. I was there Friday night and Saturday day and night and Sunday. And I thought it was a great event again. Just want to let the board know, the DDA, they, they had me get, secure some quotes on a few different projects. The big one was to put a walking path or a sidewalk on Fruit Road from Island Drive to Nook on the south side. And it ain't cheap, but it'll be a DDA project. If we go through that, it'll be their decision. I think the quote was about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a little over a mile long. Like I say, you know, you got to buy the easements, got to fill in the ditches. But my estimate, that's probably the, where we need a sidewalk the most in the township right now. There's no shoulders and, and we do have people, kids walking, going to school and everything, and there's going to be more building on that road. So, the demand's going to get more. So, that's something that DDA is going to be looking at. I don't know if they're going to do that or not, or the timeframe. I just want to bring it to the board's attention. The frost laws did go on yesterday. So, heavy trucks on the, on the roads that are, are under the frost laws, they, what is it, thirty-five percent? They have to cut their weight thirty-five percent, and I think they can only go thirty-five miles an hour, if I remember right. And let's see, I think that's it. So, that ends the supervisors' report. Not too painful, is it?
Not too painful.
Not too painful.
I'll give you credit.
Yeah? All right. Appreciate that. Appreciate good critiquing. Why my face isn't so painted? You like that? At the event, Winter Fest, they have this awesome face painter, Chantel. I get my face painted every year. She made me into a robot. And it looked awesome. In fact, my sister-in-law, I just found out tonight, she, they showed my mom. I said, hey, who is it? I don't know. Who is it? It's your son. Pretty funny. But yeah, it was a great event.
I thought you were one of the wrestlers.
Yeah, well, a lot of people thought I was going to wrestle. Someday I will.
I was only joking about the other day when I said.
Yeah. All right, we got to move on here.
Choose one.
Police chief, you got a report?
Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry something came up, and I wasn't at the last meeting, so I tried to make up for that extra special on this one, huh? First of all, I just wanted to go over for the month of January, the report which I gave you is showing the, the warrants that were signed for the month of January. With that totaling, we had twenty-two misdemeanor warrants and nine felony warrants. That just goes to show you, I mean, that's the month of January. Now, as we start getting warmer, that just progresses and progresses and progresses. So, kind of gives you an idea where we're running now. It used to be, I remember, you know, when I first started here, me and Kevin, way back in the day, you know, we, we'd look forward to these months because, boy, things would quiet down and, and you'd be able to get caught up on some things. Those days are long gone. We, we don't have that luxury anymore. But just trying to keep the board's attention up on, you know, exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it. Going on to another thing, the month of January, we also had a, another departmental meeting, which I'd like to say went fantastic. All very positive. Great feedback from everybody. Can't say enough about the people that I work with. They're all top shelf. We all work really well together. And it, it really shows if, if you be at one of our meetings. They're productive and, you know, they, they really go in the right direction. It's, it's nice to see. Another thing I want to touch base on, everything is going pretty good with the DTF right now. I, I just received some stats in that from them, which I'll be getting out to you guys for the board's attention. Take a look at some of the things that are going on there as well. They did contact me actually right before the meeting over on the island. They were down here doing some things. So, everything positive with that as well. Keeping the finger on the pulse there, making sure that everything's going the way that we want it to be going. We did get our new dispatch council up and running, so we are rolling there. We are good to go with two positions now. So, when we, it's going to be really nice when we do get hit with any of these major events or any big storms or anything like that, that's going to create havoc within that dispatch. It's going to make things much easier on our dispatchers having that second position. So, I thank the board for that. Okay, we did take care of the one issue that we had with the Michigan Municipal League when they came out, and that was because of a light switch in our, our Sally Port. We since put in a, well, actually, we put all LED lighting in there, which is, I think, going to save us a ton of money. And we also put in there a motion light, so basically, when you come in any door in there, it automatically comes on. So, took care of that problem. That was our one and only strike, I'm happy to say, so that went pretty well. And we do have the steps up and running for our next generation 911. We have been able to meet all the requirements thus far that they've asked. So, that's kind of streamlined it right now. We're looking pretty good on that one. We did have our vehicles, our old vehicles that we've had around for quite some time now. Some of them dating back, I'll bet you probably eight years or better, go out to auction. This new company that we are using now, I've got to say, has been fantastic. We sent these vehicles out, and I can tell you, in the past, we probably would have got, I'll bet you, if we got a high, high, high bid, if we got two thousand dollars for these cars, all of them, we'd have been happy. Well, we cleared twenty-five thousand dollars with these vehicles, which is going to be fantastic, because obviously, we're at that point in the year that we're in needed vehicles, so that's going to help.
Buy a car.
Absolutely. And can't say enough there. It's fantastic. Other than that, I, I guess everything's going pretty good. Like I say, as always, trying to keep you guys informed what we got going. One thing to touch on the guys here, these guys are doing a fantastic job when it comes to this training and what we're doing throughout the county, and these guys have really stepped up. And, you know, not only are they doing a good job, they're enjoying what they're doing, which is projecting a real positive image in our department throughout this entire county. And I can't thank them enough for that, because, you know, all that comes back to us and, and shows, you know, where Clay Township sits within, within this county. And we're trying to be a, a, a pretty big voice within this county. And, and it's working real well with, throughout all the other municipalities. We work real well with them, and I think we're making a lot of good progression because of that. But, you know, it all comes down to with today's day and age and what we just seen here in Florida and that, we're trying to take every step we can to be proactive and not reactive with these things. We do have scheduled for this next week, Monday and Tuesday. Monday will be, the guys will be in Immaculate Conception Schools teaching the ALIS training. Tuesday, they're going to be at Elginak High School doing the ALIS training. And we have up and coming here, within the next month or so, they're going to be in Algonquin, Millside, so on. We're also going to have to be in Anchor Bay. So, everything's rolling right along with that, and everything's coming along really well. But, you know, obviously, going back to what these guys are saying, we need input from the community. And that's really what it boils down to, is letting us know if there's something that you see, something you hear, especially social media nowadays. Okay, if, if you see somebody that is posting something that just is not right, it's not making sense. We need to, we need to know about this. We need to know about these things, so we can take care of these things before something like this, God forbid, something like this happens in our community. Like you said, Marine City just had something like this, a kind of a copycat, you know, but it was just somebody throwing something out there on social media, basically just to try to disrupt the system. Unfortunately, you're not going to be able to get away from that. You know, we, we're going to have to just do what we can to sift through those things. But with, with saying that, you have to. You, you have to take everything as though it, it is absolutely serious. We, we did have one here a couple of weeks ago where it came to us after it was kind of played down a little bit, came to us, we looked at it and said, no, this doesn't look right to us, and we don't like the way it looks. We got ahold of the FBI, and less than an hour, we had two FBI agents sitting in our lobby waiting for us. And that's an ongoing investigation right now. So, the littlest things, say something, let us know.
Hey, chief, real quick, how, how many warrants did we do again in January?
Thirty-one total. We had, actually, let's see, seventeen of them went to St. Clair County Prosecutor's Office. Of those seventeen, nine of those were felonies. The rest were misdemeanors. And then we had fourteen local warrants.
Now, I just wanted, you know, you said how busy, what's the average time it takes an officer to process? I know they.
You know, it, it really depends. It's, it's very time. It's it's very time consuming. I mean, like anything else, the problem that you get into, and what we've tried to really streamline, is redundancy. But unfortunately, because everybody is not streamlined together, you can't get rid of all the redundancy. So everything becomes, it becomes time consuming. These guys, I mean, this job, I mean, there's a lot of paperwork. There's so much more to that than what people know. And anybody that's coming in doing this job, I think it's one of the things that shock them right off the bat is all the paperwork that comes with it. Luckily, now, you're not having to do it back in the day when we were on typewriters doing triplicate forms. Then you screw up, start over again. Little bit easier on you now, but time consuming, unbelievable.
Right.
Unbelievable. But Kevin's still putting it on the screen, but we're almost there.
Putting it out on the screen.
But, you know, and definitely wanna thank the board for all the support. Oh, one other thing, we did, Lieutenant and I just get did get back from the Michigan Chiefs Conference.
Yeah.
Brought a lot of good stuff back with us from there, made some very good connections there, got some very good information on new legislature that's looking to come down the pipe, as well as a lot of things with policy and procedures and some some things that, you know, I need to sit down and work on, and we need to just kinda shore up a little bit. I think we're looking pretty good, but it's like anything else, we need to take a look and just freshen things up a little bit to what today's standard is. So those are some of the things that we're focused on that will be getting done throughout the rest of this year, so.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks a lot. Thanks for coming. Okay, next we have, we don't have anything on their unfinished business. New business, Algonac Clay Historical Society is asking us to do a craft vendor or allowing them to do a craft vendor show in the park August 4th. They've been doing it for three, four years now, and we haven't had any issues, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Algonac Clay Historical Society Craft Vendors in the Park on August 4th, 2018.
Support.
Okay, motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, second thing on the treasure, or on the treasure, on the agenda, is the treasurer's request for the MMTA training, $550 plus five nights of lodging under line item 253-960. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we, Christie with the training from MMTA for $550 plus five nights of lodging from line item 101253960.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion?
Looks like it's gonna be a rip-roaring. Lots of stuff for you to.
Debt management.
It is a lot.
Five days. Governmental accounting.
Lots of stuff, yes.
For sure.
It's gonna be a good one.
It's gonna be a wild time, hanging out with a bunch of treasures.
Six days, five nights. I'm jealous.
We'll expect full presentation.
Full presentation when you come in. I will be ready to give that.
Okay. Any more discussion? We have a motion, support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have resolution 201804 to adopt the poverty exemption income guidelines amended. We're actually amending them.
I believe we're amending them to adopt the annual federal poverty guidelines, so that we don't have to update this resolution every year. It'll just revert to whatever the current federal guidelines are from this point going forward. So I will make a motion to approve resolution 201804 for adapting poverty exemption income guidelines.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? I will just real briefly, when we first got in office five years ago, there was over 50 people on this poverty exemption. And I didn't even know it existed. I could not believe it.
Locally?
Yes, right here. It was like a whole street was not paying any taxes. And we had to do some serious amending to the guidelines under the, what we allow our board of, I buy my board of reviews to allow these, which we did, and educate a lot of the people that were getting it, that, you know, it's not meant to be a way of life, but it's a, if you need it for a year or two, it's a bridge, hopefully.
A crutch.
But I give them a lot of credits, we've come a long way, and that's all I'm gonna say about this. Any other comments or discussion?
They got that number down quite a bit, too.
Yes, I don't think we have anybody that's 100% or two. We have, we have two that's 100%. They definitely need it and deserve it. And then we have probably, I don't know, four or five partials.
I think we have, yeah, total of seven.
Seven total, five partials and two. Yeah. So any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have resol, resolution 201805, adoption of poverty exemption policy and asset test guidelines amended. And here again, it's basically doing the same thing, is that right, Cindy?
Yep, this is in regards to the asset test, though. So there's an income and an asset test for each of them.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to approve resolution 201805 to adopt the poverty exemption policy and asset test guidelines amended.
Support.
Okay, motion and loss of support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, next we have DPW purchased 2018 Ram Quad Cab 4x4 truck, $24,169 coming out of their line item 970-591. And nine, oh, yes, it's split up between sewer and water, I'm sorry, 590-970 and 591-970. We do two-thirds water, one-third sewer, and this is a budgeted item.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the 2018 Ram Quad Cab 4x4 for $24,169 deriving from line items 590-970 and 591-970.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Wish I could buy a truck that cheap.
I know. I'm trying to sell mine.
No kidding. For 20, 24 grand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we retiring any vehicles? Does this replace?
I think we have all one, I.
We have an old one right now that we use.
Yeah, we got it parked over there full of parts.
Okay. Are we going to retain that one?
Yeah, I think so, just, just, yeah, I think we're gonna retain it because during the winter, we load this truck up with all kinds of parts and equipment that we may need on the island during the ice jam, we just park it over there. So other than, you know, just for that purpose only, so we probably just retain it. Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have an agenda, Advantage Tech, this is for Office 365 Migration, costs estimated about $2,000 for doing the onboard. And then it's a Microsoft product, the cost of this would be $140 a month thereafter. It's, well, it's not real complicated, but it is, but we have Josh here, if you can, he's here for any questions, if you wanna come up, Josh, and answer it. Basically, tell him about the product, it's more robust than what we have, and it's a lot more secure.
Yeah, Office 365 is really, it's Microsoft's platform for a lot of different things that they're going to be doing. I mean, you can get everything from your copies of Office from there to SharePoint, all different Office-based stuff, as well as Exchange Online. What we're looking at here is just the email portion of it. It would give everybody in the township an email box that can be accessed and synced between mobile devices, home, computers, as well as, it's gonna store it all in the cloud, so nothing would be stored locally here. If down the road, you guys, instead of buying a copy of Office, just wanted to get a license, we would just add that to the license, whatever Microsoft charges, we could just add it to there. And it's all built under one platform, would give the township administrative access to do whatever they wanna do, control their own passwords, policies for deletion, anything they would like to do, so.
Yep. It's a lot more robust. Right now, the St. Clair County is hosting our email, and they do charges for that. And it's.
It's horrible.
Yes, thank you.
That's understandable.
It's horrible, yeah.
It just went down again the other day.
Right.
It's an old, it's an old platform.
It is, and it's on an old Exchange server, and I know it's a pain in the butt for them to manage it, and I kinda think eventually this is gonna disappear. But for a lot of security reasons and usability.
We're pretty excited we're looking to move away from it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's not actually an Exchange-based platform that you're on with St. Clair County, or it would be an easier migration. If it was, it would be easy. It's just old-school pop mail.
Pop, pop.
Download it on, you guys will gain shared calendars, away messages, I know was a big thing. I think everybody gets an individual 50-gig mailbox, which is huge in comparison to what you see. Pretty much anything you wanna do via email, it will do, as well as, Microsoft does back it. The other thing that they include is their own sort of protection for firewalls and stuff like that. I'm sure you guys get tons of spam, and nothing's perfect for spam, but I don't know what St. Clair County uses.
Nothing.
Okay, well, they, Microsoft does include that as well, so when you go through the airports and you see signs for things like Barracuda and stuff like that, Microsoft has their own, that is included in this subscription, they maintain that. And it is backed by an SLA from Microsoft. I think they guarantee like 99.999% uptime, realist, or they'll pay you, but realistically, the purpose of that is not to get the township money back, as well as more just Microsoft saying, hey, this will be up and running.
Right.
We've used it, a few other board members have used it, and it's, it works.
What's your timing on?
Been in Josh's shop a couple months now.
What's your timing on onboarding?
Well, we would actually do the the next line I'd run the agenda, we would do it in conjunction with that. My initial plan for onboarding of Office 365, what was significantly more, but we've gotten some help from the police department, said they're gonna help with their share of it.
Yeah, we'll do.
I know Artie was gonna help with some of the stuff here. It wouldn't take us too long to get your, all your new mail coming in, a few weeks, once, depends on whenever the board is. The hardest part about it is not necessarily getting the new mail to the new system, it's all the old mail. There is no easy migration plan, but getting your new stuff setting up, that could be done really quickly.
And this is what that $90 an hour is about when you come in to do that?
That's part of it, yeah. The refresh that we talk about in the next section, everything that we do, we normally get about $180 for non-agreement clients, but seeing as you guys will have an agreement with us, we'll just do it at that $95 an hour rate. So if, good way to look at it, is the more cooperative, and that's kind of a bad term because that implies people aren't gonna be cooperative, but if you didn't have any previous email, I could have this set up in eight hours. Most of this is just going to be, how many mailboxes do we need to grab, and where is that mail residing?
So what do you, what do you estimate kinda that it'll take?
I.
Ten hours, 20 hours, 50 hours?
I think 20 hours would be pretty close, based on when I had some meetings earlier of who's gonna do their own migrations. Obviously, if if somebody throws their hands up and says, no, I don't wanna do that, and I'm handed another 20 boxes that I have to call those people, set up their mail, then obviously that cost would go up. But I think 20 hours would be more than fair. I was working with Cindy on some of the stuff, and she's very competent in sharing out her own calendars and doing a lot of the customizations that the township wants. Assuming that that happens, I think 20 hours is more than, more than, more than enough. It might actually be a little on the high side. But what I can do is if we get into this and I notice it becoming a problem where, okay, we didn't project this, I'll definitely let you guys know before you just get a huge bill.
That's what I'm thinking about, you know, the.
For sure. There is no.
Overrun cost.
Yeah, there really is no turning back, though. I'll be honest with you there, once you, once you make this leap, you're plowing through anything. I don't, we've done a lot of due diligence in it, I don't, I don't see any major issues with it at all. The hardest part is going to be the old mail. That's the Office 365 portion of it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Advantage Tech's Office 365 Migration for an estimated $2,000 onboarding fee and approximately $150, $140 per month for maintenance?
That's for the licensing for each email account every month.
The 140 is?
Yeah.
Currently, currently, we're paying the county $75 for the old POP system.
Okay.
We don't actually charge anything to maintain the boxes, that cost is straight from Microsoft. The management fee, which is the next item, it's kind of a thing that we, Microsoft Office 365 is something we manage as part of that, so we don't charge you any fee for it.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Well, I think you already answered my question, who the main contact person here in the township is going to be as far as the, is basically overseeing the onboarding and all that other stuff. I think you pinpointed Mike, the chief.
Yeah, it'd be Mike and myself mostly.
All right.
I think we have about, total about 35, 40 mailboxes.
Okay.
And like you said, the most of the, the time is, is, you know, pulling our old emails, condense into a PSD file and then upload it to the new system. Depends on how much, I mean, some people can take three, four hours to do that, they have a lot of emails, but I can do that with my eyes shut, believe it, you know, I've, it's been around for quite a while, so.
Yeah, it's an old-school way of doing things.
Yeah, yeah, it's not hard, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Josh, if this gets approved, will you assign somebody from your firm to, like, an account executive for us?
For the Office 365 Migration?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would probably be one of the guys that was in with me last week, would help oversee this. I might actually get a little bit, just because of the relationship, I might actually oversee some of this myself, unfortunately. Just 'cause I don't want you calling me.
Oh, I'll call.
Can we talk about the shady people that you were mentioning? I'd like to report one.
I am not afraid to call.
Yeah, we have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Moving right along, we have Advantage Tech IT Support, we have an estimated cost of $5,000 for onboarding and a $14.65 monthly charge after that. You wanna go ahead again? I know we talked about the other meeting, I wasn't there at that meeting, but give a review.
Sure, I came in, me and a colleague, and we basically inventoried everything that you guys have. Right now, you have about three servers, 17 workstations, and that's what we bill off of site servers and workstations. We actually think we can decommission one of them to bring it down to two and 17. And that's really what we do our billing off of, so I could, I could tell you exactly, you know, we don't give a discount if you hit 20 or one. So on that, what we had, what we had estimated is, you know, probably a day of finishing up a few things, getting the firewalls in that you guys need, and then we're gonna go around to each computer and basically clean them up the best that we can, remove some of the toolbars that just naturally come from human error, answer any staffing questions, make sure that you guys have access into our support portal, how do you contact us make sure that you guys have access into our support portal, how do you contact us and everything like that, as well as, at the same time, work on some of the Office 365 migration stuff, so that way, we're actually, hopefully can keep the cost down of both of those. Your invoice would probably be one invoice for both of those, 'cause we would just roll it in under one project. So that's really what we're gonna do. I estimated fifty hours-ish to do that, which is where the five thousand came from. It really is going to, all depending on how many questions. We were in here, I think I booked a half hour, and I think we were in here for about two and a half hours, just talking to different people about, oh, well, this hasn't really worked. What we've seen is, once you get a competent IT company in, all the, the old questions that they just kind of gave up on asking kind of resurfaced, so we want to spend the time with your team and make sure that we answer those and get those taken care of, so that way, when it does come time for support, we know exactly what we're doing for you guys. And that is also billed just time, so if we're here twenty hours, well, it's two grand, but I, I'm thinking the five is probably pretty close on that, and once again, I would communicate that.
Yeah, I mean, there's a good, I think what I'm, you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, the total cost of three sixty-five plus the onboarding could be five thousand dollars.
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
It all depends on how many problems they have, and.
Right.
You know, if I have to wait, I know we were, we were working on one thing, and getting a password, if I have to wait and that postpones something, well, well, then obviously you guys know, not that, not saying it would, but.
We got passwords.
Yep, perfect. We all have passwords until we don't have them.
We do have to run a couple drops for Wi-Fi, we're gonna put some Wi-Fi access points in here, and then, what?
It's already up there in the corner.
Oh.
We left one up here already.
Okay, and we need to drop it for the video, too, so we can do live screen, streaming.
Yeah, so this was assuming, I mean, we will put, that's the other thing we're gonna do as part of that fifty hours, we're gonna put some Wi-Fi in here and over there that will hand you off as you walk, and if we need to add more, obviously, we will, but I think that should cover it and to save some costs, you know? If you guys can have the network drop ran there, perfect, and I think there already is one, so.
Yep, for here, we might need one back there, but.
Yep.
So we're looking at, for the two of these, roughly twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars?
No.
For the fourteen-hundred, sixty-five dollars a month.
Oh.
I'm looking at the whole.
Right, fourteen sixty-five, right now, we, this will probably cost us about four or five thousand dollars what we're paying now currently, but what we're getting now isn't, I'm, I look at value, and, and, but what we're getting now, it's hodgepodge, it's pieced together, we only call them.
When we can't stand it anymore.
Yeah, when we can't stand it anymore.
At least we set the bar low.
Just doesn't work. Where they'll, you know, they'll take care of, you know, if, hey, I, this is annoying me, or I got this little error message.
Oh, for seven error messages?
Yeah, you know, some things you just kind of ignore and work around it, and then it becomes a bigger problem. And, and plus, I'm pretty confident with their firewall system and everything, we're gonna be a lot more secure, which I was just at that loss management seminar, and the cyber attacks are, for local governments, is our number, one of our major, major concerns, and let's face it, we have a lot of information of, you know, the citizens here, and I sure hate to, you know, have some, you know, get, that get all out in the public, and I feel a lot more confident that that will not happen with the new firewalls and protection.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit on that, just so you guys feel comfortable, a little bit on what we're gonna do on the security side, what we're gonna do on the backup side, and then more or less what we're also gonna do.
And backups.
What we're also going to do, and this is, I didn't put that on here because I don't like to commit to something that we don't actually have yet, but it's in the works for our clients that are on our pro agreement, which is what I quoted you. The biggest threat, once you get a lot of these security things in that you just should have, is actually the end user. Not implying any of you guys, but they always say, you know, they can always make a smarter idiot. Not any of you guys here, of course. But what we're actually working on is a portal for our end users on our pro agreements that you guys can actually go in, and there'll be designated videos that you can watch about phishing videos and actual tests that can be ran, where they may actually send you guys a test phishing email to see how many of the staff members clicked on it, and it wasn't UPS, actually, it was a hidden link, and we'll send a report to you guys saying, hey, of the seven people that took the training, three of them didn't, you may want to get them some more. I don't, I'll have all the finer details on it, I do know it's, it's in the works, that's something we're looking at adding on to those. What we are currently putting in is we are gonna put in a sonic wall for you guys, and not just put in a firewall, every year there comes with Gateway AV fees and everything from Dell, we pay all those. It also comes with content filtering, so if you guys say, hey, obviously, we don't want this type of stuff here at the office, if somebody browses this, we can, we'll block that at the firewall level. And then your, your backups, we're actually gonna do two types of ones, we're gonna take a full image backup of your servers, I'll go really quick, 'cause I know this is a snoozer, but we're gonna take full image backups of your servers, not just an actual file itself, and what it's gonna do is it's gonna take that full image, push it to the cloud, we do give unlimited server backup to the cloud. So should the building burn down, we actually could light that up virtually for you guys to reference to it. But the cool part is, not only does it push that to the cloud, if your server were to physically blow up, we could light up that virtually here and keep you guys up and running while we repaired your server. So it's all built into that, that backup. I know you guys have something like that now, I don't know if it pushes it to the cloud or not, so. Artie says no, we, we don't really know.
I'm not sure.
So.
They say so, but I've never seen it.
So that's the security in a nutshell. Obviously, there'll be antivirus on all the workstations, I did see right now you guys have a free version of an antivirus software, that's quite.
Can we limit our exposure here, limit our conversation, so we don't reveal all of our township secrets, at least?
Actually, it's not bad.
No.
No, I mean, like I said, and I put that in the email, they're doing great stuff, I'm just, I'm not gonna say they don't or they do because we didn't spend the time, so no, it was not a, they're not doing anything wrong, it's just, I didn't look into it deep enough, 'cause it's not my place to do that.
The reason, Artie, that I brought up the money is because for the TB land, so they know.
Oh, yeah.
What, what it's all about, and you did explain it.
Yep. I mean, basically, the, I, I think the question is, okay, do you want to spend five thousand more dollars, dollars a year to make sure we have a more robust, secure system, and I, I think it will be a better end-user-friendly system, too.
And there's a certain percentage we're already budgeted for online.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Which is, the numbers are large, but understanding that we already have a lot of that covered.
Right.
I think technology has come a long way since a lot of this equipment was put in. There are some mornings that I would swear that I hear the dial-up of the modem when I'm logging on my computer.
Well, that could be a lot of different things causing that, but.
It absolutely could be, and that's why we don't like to just come in and just say, yeah, we'll take care, people that come in and say they're gonna take care of it all for free, really what they're gonna do is deploy their agents and then leave. We, I'm not gonna promise that, because I want to take the time and figure out, why is your stuff running slow? Why is your email doing this? So, all stuff that we just won't know.
Well, and I really think to know where we're at, we really need to have you go through each of our servers, our computers, and, and do that full onboarding, so I'm appreciative that you want to take the time to do all of that, because I think that's, that's where we need to start, for sure.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to get on board with the IT support at five thousand dollar estimate for onboarding, and one thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars a month thereafter. Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? One thing I will say will make questioning a lot easier, because how we are now, it's, we don't have, you know, it's a paperball, we guess.
And this, this does come with a three-hour service allowance, our pro agreements do for the, if you guys do have an add, move, or change, which is what we consider service, three hours a month this does cover, so that, because our goal is for you guys to not get a random hundred-dollar bill. If you need us to come out on site for an hour or two, once a month, that's something we can do, and that's included as part of this agreement.
So don't buy two new computers at the township, just one, one month, and one the next month.
Whatever you feel's best.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thanks a lot, Josh.
Okay, yeah, just go ahead and get that filled out for me, and then we'll start on the, I know the, the email's a big portion.
Yeah.
We'll probably start on that a little earlier, so we can at least get you guys going.
Okay, sounds good, thanks. Okay, next we have board member comments. Who wants to start, what in?
I do.
You do?
I do. Because I have to write down everybody else's stuff.
Okay, you want me to start with you all the time?
Yes.
I'm glad you told me that. Been what, two, three years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank Officer Hopkins, he's not here, for his service and his time here in Clay. I'm pretty sure he's going to be missed by his department. Ah, you say that now. And I wish him well on his new endeavors, and I wanted to thank Clay PD for coming in, especially Sergeant Stockwell and Officer Farhado for doing that presentation for us tonight. It's pretty informative, and I hope that a bunch of members of the community get to see that as well.
Thank you. Joanne?
I'm just on the same tone that Cindy just talked about, and that Chief Coach stated that everybody is happy and likes what they're doing, doing, and it is quite apparent that Officer Stockwell and Farhado enjoy what they are doing. Could almost go and have a weekly television show, perform so well, it was good, it was good. No, fine job, I'm just complimenting you, got a fine job.
Thank you.
Oh, it's my turn.
Yeah.
All right, well, you know, I'm excited about the township, you know, it's a little over a year since we've been in office here, and I have seen things progress significantly with all the departments. It's been, been heartwarming, to tell you the truth. Paying attention to a lot of detail, it's, it's a super the sea. Personnel, technology, equipment, and education and training are foremost and in front of everything, so thank you all.
Well, definitely deserves to be repeated that you guys are doing an outstanding job, and I thank you very much, and kind of riding on Mark's coattails there, it's been a privilege to be here for the year we've been here and working with everybody, and great job, Chief Coach, for leading a great team.
Thank you. I'm excited about the cat training as well, I'm anxious to maybe get a follow-up report in a month or so, and just to see how she goes. Know that, speaking for myself, that you'll have my full support on, on future budget items or increasing awareness in the community. It's important, and it's a direction we need to go. In addition, the Algonex Sports Boosters are holding their, their annual auction dinner on Saturday, March the twenty-fourth at Cedar Glen. Doors open at six, dinner at seven, tickets are thirty-five bucks, you can contact our AD Mitch Landrum on the school's website. Thank you.
I have some for sale as well. And I have Rappel tickets. I would like to remind our residents that February twenty-eighth is the last day that you can make your tax payments at the township before they are turned over to St. Clair County, so we would really like to help you out, not have to drive to Port Huron, come in and get your taxes paid, please.
Thank you. I also wish Sean, Sean Hopkins good luck going forward, he's going to Oakland County Sheriff, right? Yeah, good for him, he's a great guy, I'll miss him. I did want to mention, too, I just got an email, Saturday the twenty-fourth, there's a food giveaway, I guess, for needy people, there's no income requirement or anything, it's gonna be at the El Cockwin Junior High School, Saturday, it's not junior high school anymore, elementary school, from ten to two, Saturday the twenty-fourth, and they're also looking for help, volunteers to unload the truck also. And that, that, careful of all the pothills, right, Chris? We got them, and you know, I, I was talking to the road commission, you know, they're filling these things, and two days later, they're back with all this rain and water, but.
Flooded roads.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of, a lot of water laying around, and, you know, I, I do want to thank, you know, the police department, and I, I hope people take advantage of the training and awareness, and you guys are doing a great job with that, big kudos. And without getting too sappy, you know what, we have a really good working board, and I appreciate you guys as trustees, too.
We don't fight.
Well, a little bit of fighting's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good. I'm not gonna lie, a little bit's good, but.
So we're taking our gloves off now, okay.
A little healthy debate.
That's all I wanted to hear.
A little healthy debate is good, we, we'll, we'll put that ring up, and the wrestling ring up again, we'll figure it out in there. But, but, no, it, it, it's, it's good, and it makes our job, my job, and, and Chrissy and Cindy's job easier, too, to have a good board, working board, and I, I'm really positive going forward, I mean, we, we've done a lot in the past year, and there's a lot of cool things coming up on the horizon, too, so it makes me excited, so.
Oh, you know what, can I have one thing?
Okay.
No, I feel like Cindy, she did that before. For the, the Winter Fest over the weekend, I wanted to thank the fire department and the PD and water department, and everybody that came together to make that what it was, 'cause it was a great time.
Yes, it was, it was, I guess, I was there the whole weekend, and you know, the, they had the ice skaters, the figure skaters from Mount Clemens, and.